Officially going to call the meeting to order. It is 7 o'clock PM on Monday, November 18th, 2019, and I call to order this regular meeting of the Richfield School Boards. In attendance this evening are Board members Paula Cole, Peter Tensing, Christine Malik, Tim Paulus, and I am Crystal Brackey, Superintendent Unowski, and our student Board members, Diana Meseo, Lucy Luna, and Naomi Ferguson are also with us at the table. Board member John Ashmead let us know in advance that he was going to be arriving late this evening, so you will see him joining us at some point in the middle of the meeting. There are printed copies of the agenda on that table over there. If you would like to have a printed copy, the full Board packet is available on the richfieldschools.org website. I very much appreciate everyone for being here this evening, and as part of our welcome and introduction to the meeting this evening, I wanted to take a few moments to share my thoughts as Board Chair on what took place in our high school cafeteria last week and how we are responding to it. First, I want to be clear that you will not hear anyone at this table defend what occurred in two lunch periods last Monday, because it is indefensible. I speak for the Board when I say that we were stunned and angry and embarrassed by what took place and how it has reflected on our schools and our community. When negative lunch balances reach a certain level for individual students as well as collectively across the district, we should be taking actions that address the root causes of the debt rather than actions that could cause harm or embarrassment to individual students. And what happened on Monday obviously did not live up to those values and beliefs. I am grateful to the high school team for taking immediate steps on Monday to apologize and talk with our students about what happened, both those directly affected as well as the entire student body. I am grateful for the work taking place within the district to understand why these actions happened and discuss why it was a violation of the trust that we strive to build with our students, families, and community. As far as what we are specifically doing in response to the harm that has occurred, there are a number of things that I wanted to publicly share. We are taking steps with outside support just to understand what happened on Monday and why, given it was such a breakdown in process and in trust. We will be using that information to determine how to respond and how to work with our staff to ensure nothing like this happens again. We are taking responsibility as a district and are using this deeply difficult moment for all of us to be accountable while honoring the privacy and the dignity that everyone in our care deserves. As Principal Daniels has said, "This is an opportunity for all of us to model owning our failures with grace." We are working to address the technical issues that have been shared about how our technology system and how people are notified when balances are low or negative can be problematic and inconsistent. We are going to revisit the existing procedure that outlines our approach to meal debt to ensure that the language within it is aligned to the spirit of the conversations we have previously had as a Board and is reflective of what we want to have happen moving forward. We are exploring systemic solutions to the issue of meal debt and how we can ensure every student has access to a full and healthy meal regardless of financial circumstance. And I want to say thank you to all of the people inside and outside of our community who have shared ideas and examples from other communities that are helping to guide our efforts. We are grateful for the overwhelming generosity of individuals who have contributed funds to the district in the last week to pay down the existing meal debt. I deeply appreciate the support of these individuals and all of you who wanted to show the love to our students and our community this last week in particular. As of today, over $20,000 has been contributed directly to Richfield Public Schools for student meals. I also think it's important for me to say that crowdfunding is not a lasting solution to this problem. We need an institutional approach that is not going to rely on the generosity of individuals over time, and that is some of the long-term work that we are really committed to as a Board and as a district. Finally, I want to apologize to our whole community, but to our students in particular. I am so sorry for what happened on Monday. I expect better of us and better from us and am committed to action in the days, weeks, and months ahead. We are here as a Board to listen in the public comment section for people who would like to address us this evening about what has taken place. And my fellow individual Board members will also have the opportunity to speak in more depth in the information and questions from the Board section of the agenda. So if you see that on your agenda, that is when my fellow Board members will also be sharing any thoughts that they want to share this evening. So with that, we will now move to the first item of business, which is to approve the agenda before us this evening. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Cole. Is there any discussion?
I have one question.
Sure.
You had mentioned previously the possibility of moving some things around. Are we not doing that?
Correct. So because we have students and families from Centennial here, if we had a significant number of people that wanted to address the Board, I was going to flip the order so that they could go first, but we have two people that have signed up to make public comments, so I feel comfortable keeping the order of the agenda as is.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. So we move into the next section of the agenda, which this evening begins with time for public comment. We have two requests, as I just mentioned, for public comment this evening. Before the first comment, I will provide the brief overview of our guidelines, which I provide any meeting when we have somebody asked to address the Board. As outlined in Board Policy 216, "We welcome comments from members of the public. We ask that you ensure your comments are consistent with our policy, especially around protecting the privacy rights of individual students and staff members. Members of the public have three minutes to speak unless translation is required, in which case six minutes are provided." Mary, our Board Secretary, will indicate when your time is drawing to a close by raising this card over here. Thank you in advance for sharing your thoughts with us, and know that even though the Board will not be responding in the moment this evening, we will take your comments seriously, and you may receive follow-up from us or from a member of the staff. And I also want to say this year, because I think I forgot to mention it earlier, if you have written feedback that you would like to share, because we know getting up and speaking in front of the audience with the microphone does not feel comfortable to all, there are also written forms in the table right outside that door if you would like to write a comment and leave that with us this evening as well. So the first comment this evening is from Chris Seltin. Chris, you can make your way up to the microphone, please. Yes. We're going to listen to this person speak for just a couple of minutes. That's my name. It could be. It could also be about mistakes that schools make sometimes. Yeah. Yes.
I moved here in June 1984 and attended RHS for three years and graduated in 1987. From the time I moved here, I appreciated Richfield's small-town atmosphere and the feeling that we should care for all. What happened recently is something I can't even fathom. There have been reports about sitting down with students to apologize, but if you don't know what it's like to be hungry, your apology really means nothing. If you don't know what it's like to deal with hunger, you can take it from me. As one of five kids raised by a single mom and know what it's like to get hungry, it's not fun. Over half a million Minnesotans struggle with hunger, and over 20% of those are kids. Face it, these head schoolers are kids. You say you don't want kids to be bullied, and then you're made to feel embarrassed and apply a target for bullying. I am sure there will be multiple plans brought up to prevent this from happening again, but to give you some perspective, I wanted to share the following. The national average cost for a hot lunch for a high school student is $2.74 a set. There are 180 school days per year on average. RHS has an average population of 1,124 students. Richfield has a population of 35,990. $2.74 times 180 days in a school year equals $493.20 sets. $493.20 times 1124 equals 554,357. $554,357 divided by 35,990 equals $15.40 sets. So realistically, all you need is 20 bucks. I have it right here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Our second comment is from Deanna Ekholm. You can make your way to the microphone as well.
Thank you. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but thought it was important. I'm concerned, obviously, first and foremost, about the incident that happened this last week, primarily for the children that it impacted and affected, and I think we can all agree. Also extremely embarrassed at the negative publicity it caused our community. I am a longstanding citizen and parent in the Richfield Schools. I was shocked that administration wasn't more involved in the implementation of this policy. We need to hold our school administration accountable to the actions of our leaders. As the Chief Human Resource Officer in my organization, you can probably imagine that I hold policies of the organization extremely seriously. I also serve in the Chief Diversity Officer role and I work with our staff on how you treat people. And I was appalled at the video and just the simplicity of throwing away foods versus implementing the policy in a different way. I appreciate the comments of the Board Chair, and I know that things will be done to look at how we implement policies in the future. But I would like more from our school and our Board, more of a response on how we're going to avoid this in the future. While I was not impacted directly by this decision of our administration, I do have my own experiences with Board administration, and I don't think that they always gave into account the best interest of our children and how you simply treat people. It is your job as leaders to prepare your other leaders how to implement policies. And it's sad that we have to have outside consultants to help us review this situation and something that could have been avoided. So I thank you for taking it seriously, but I hope that you continue the conversation and just know that people are watching in the community and now on a national level. And we, as a community, have to respond beyond just our accountability source and this short-term fix of getting those accounts covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Thank you to the two of you who signed up to speak this evening. Again, I would just reiterate, if people would like to leave written comments, there are sheets at the back, and the contact information for the Board is all available on the richfieldschools.org website. If you would like to have a one-on-one conversation, I know I certainly volunteer to speak with anybody who would like to talk in more depths with me as Board Chair or I'm sure other members of the Board. Welcome being contacted as well. The next opportunity for public comment will be at our Board meeting on Monday, December 16th, if anybody who is watching or is here would like to speak with us again. So we will move next into the Superintendent Update section of the agenda. So I turn things over to Superintendent Unowski.
All right, so I'm excited to bring up to the microphone Principal Colleen Mahoney and her team of students, parents, and community members from Centennial to talk about picturing and writing. And just as a reminder, each of our schools presented at least once to the school board and talked about some of the exciting things that are happening in their school. With that, Principal Mahoney?
Thank you. Good evening. It is my great pleasure to introduce you to some of our wonderful staff at Centennial and fabulous students who want to share some of their picturing and writing projects with you this evening. I think you're going to be pretty impressed. Our older students had a party last Friday and celebrated with their families, and our younger students will have that same opportunity coming up on next Tuesday. And so they are just itching to show you what they have. They're very proud and should be of their work. I'll start by introducing our staff. Rachel Weber and Liz Jamison are two of the teachers that work with the students in picturing and writing. And we have Ava, Andrea, and Cesar here to share their projects with you today. So I'll turn it over to the teachers, guys.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to showcase some of our work in the English Language Learner Department. This year, we brought back a program that has been implemented in our school previously called Picturing and Writing. It's an arts-in-language integration where we capitalized on our students, our elementary students' innate ability to tell stories with visual arts and then use that as a platform to then write stories based on their work with visual arts. And it is a process. We're using it as a framework this time where we are incorporating some of the standards in social studies and sciences and using that as content. And then, along with language, we're creating products, written products, for our students to keep as keepsakes. And it's just a beautiful opportunity for them to express themselves.
So my name is Liz Jamison, and I'm an ESL teacher at Centennial. I work with the third, fourth, and fifth graders, many who have had picturing and writing in the past. So it's sort of fun to revisit that and to see how much they have grown. As Rachel said, we use our project is looking at the standards and looking at what the students are studying. So anyway, so really what we want to do is showcase these students. We have a process that we go through. It's fairly rigorous, but it's a lot of fun. But then it starts with painting a picture. Before that comes research. So they have to look at... We have to talk about different kinds of extreme weather for the fourth grade. We have to talk about the Mississippi River for the fifth grade, for instance. We have to research it. We look at nonfiction and some fiction, some fiction as well. So that helps us get ideas. And then we go ahead and restart. It's a part of the process. We go ahead and do some modeling. We're teaching the kids some techniques for painting, which will depict, like snow, for instance, or water, various things, or movement of a river. So we do that. The kids take that. They go, they run with it. So we do that. And then we start doing... And then they paint. They paint their wonderful paintings. Okay. Which they stand in front of them and they start looking at their paintings, and we all start scaffolding. We start looking at, what's another way to say big? Or long? What are other words? What are more interesting words that we can use to expand that language? And that is key. Because they're English language learners, and we want to all do better to increase our vocabulary. So we do that. And then we do some more scaffolding. And the kids start writing away. And that's a lot of fun to see what they come up with. Eventually, they'll be typing up their work. And then they create a book. So you'll get some examples of that, right?
First grade and second grade are doing a book called "The Sun's Day", and that is exploring different times of the day and different places the sun is in the sky during the day moving into evening. So without further ado, I have two first-grade students. Would you like to come up and share your art and your words?
We've asked them to pick one page that shows you their artwork and shows you their words.
So this is kind of a sneak preview from an as-yet unpublished book. If you'd like to come to our publishing priority, please try that.
Would you like to go first?
How about you? Yes. So should we do it kind of like we do in class where I can put this onto the screen and have everybody look at it for 10 seconds? So what should we do now? Okay, everybody, if you could, please, take in a deep breath and look at the painting. We try not to blink.
The sun is waking up. The peaceful sky is going to school. It is dawn. I am putting my shoes on.
Nice reading, loud and proud. Could you tell the audience, what is your favorite part of this painting? You were telling me about it earlier.
I kind of did a great mistake.
Okay, can you show with your finger up here? Where is that drain in that mistake? Oh, yeah! And what do we call that when we do something by mistake but we actually end up really liking it?
Happy accident.
Happy accident, yes, yeah. It's beautiful. I love that happy accident. Go.
I never knew how I did it.
I know. It's just one of those things. Ava, would you like to share your art? Okay. So please, audience, if you would, take in a deep breath. Try not to blink. And so you chose this page. Could you tell me again, why did you choose this page? What was your favorite part about it? Oh, that part. I noticed that it's a bit darker than the rest of the sky. Yep. Did you do that intentionally, on purpose? No? Yeah? No? Okay, maybe. We're going to go with maybe. Thank you. And if I could ask, do you enjoy picturing?
Yes.
Why?
Because it makes you calm.
It makes you calm, okay.
And it makes me very... It makes me very like...
Harder practice. It makes it more easy. Oh, okay. And Ava, what about you? What do you like about picturing? Thank you so much. I'm very impressed.
There's a poor painter here, Cesar. He's going to come up and share one of the pages that he wanted to share with you. Now, can you tell them what it was that you... what we were working on?
You're looking about natural disaster.
And extreme weather, right? Right, because we have some of that in Minnesota. If you want to put your page up. So can you tell us a little bit about your vision?
So right here, basically, it looks like the tornado sucking up the dust. And we use white here, so then it looks like the tornado. You know how tornadoes happen mostly happen in flat land, so I basically get flat land right here that under right here.
Now, in the fourth grade, this book was with poetry. So we use different forms of poetry. You want to read this? You want to read it? Yeah. So I want to ask you a question, Ava. Do you think picturing and writing helps you? What does it do to help you?
It helps me how to make different strategies, how to paint.
Okay, so different painting strategies?
Teach, teach me.
Okay, wonderful. Does it do anything for your writing? I'm very proud. He did a great job. And he was always done first, always. Our fifth graders, for some reason, couldn't count them. So in the fifth grade, we did the Mississippi River. So we looked at the three sections of the river and wrote a paragraph about each one. And we looked at a lot of math work as well to figure out exactly how many states it borders or goes through.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to share with you our great projects. Ava, Andrea, Cesar, great job. Thank you for sharing your artwork and your beautiful words with all of us. It was so wonderful to have you here as well as pictures and your principal and your families, too. Any questions or comments from the Board to the Centennial team?
I think this school is the best.
You think this school is the best? Oh, that's really wonderful to hear. Thank you.
One question, two. So you mentioned that this is something that you brought back. Tell me a little bit about kind of the thought process on, you know, why this curriculum as opposed to another curriculum and kind of how you decide that.
Well, I have something to refer to as a curriculum. We're using it more as a framework and a process. The year that I came to this district was last year. And in my understanding, it was the school wished to continue it, but we had a whole new team and nobody was trained. So over the summer, I had the wonderful opportunity to go train with the creator of picturing and writing. And Liz joined our team as well. She had previously trained. And so we started back up after a year hiatus. I can say when I came to Centennial and I looked at the access scores from the previous year, I could not, I was shocked at how high the writing numbers were in comparison to school, previous schools that I've worked at. But just the general trend of those scores in the listening, speaking, reading, and writing scores. Usually, the reading and writing are pretty close together. The writing score was actually quite high. And so I really wanted to know how that was accomplished. And it was through picturing and writing.
Thank you.
No, I was going to add, yes, so there is, this is an evidence-based framework. So there is research online.
Picturingandwriting.org.
Thank you again to our Centennial team and special guests. Hi, John.
Those are always some of the best things that we have in our board meetings throughout the entire course of the year. Now, something not even close to as exciting. I'm going to bring up Greg Bolte, our Chief Human Resource Administrative Officer, and Bill Lauer from MFPR to talk about our final audit report from last year.
Yep, I'm just going to transition over quickly to Bill. Every year, we conduct our audit report. This is for our fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2019. So it's July 1, 2018, June 30th, 2019. We've been engaging the services of MFPR in this process for a number of years. And he'll be here to share the updated data information and all the work that our finance team and Director of Finance, Jim Gilligan, have put into this process. Please welcome Bill.
And before Bill gets started, of course, everyone is welcome to stay as long as they would like. But if the students or Centennial folk would want to transition, that is not awkward at all if you do not want to sit through some things like an audit report or things of that nature. So you're welcome to stay as long as you like, and it is also appropriate to be there.
Andrea wants to stay for your presentation. There are discussions.
Picturing math, right?
There you go.
All right. Okay. Here, well, what I would like to do first is just remind the board what our role is as auditor and kind of familiarize you once again with the process we go through. I need your packets this evening, you receive the district's annual financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2019. All of the data, the disclosures that are in that report are the responsibility of district management. We come out and perform audits, provide an opinion as to whether that document fairly presents the district's financial position and results for the year under audit. As part of that process, because the district earns more than $750,000 in federal grants annually, we also audit your federal awards expenditures and the federal single audit. As part of both of those processes, we evaluate the test of district's control over financial reporting and federal compliance. And finally, you're also subject to an audit of your compliance with Minnesota state laws and regulations. There's a compendium of laws that the state auditors, officers get with the audit. So as far as the results of the audit, I'm happy to say the process went very well again this year. The district was well prepared, their records were in good shape when they came out. Everything was ready to go, and I think the results truly reflect that. We were able to provide the district with an unmodified or clean opinion on your financial statements again this year, the highest opinion that we can give. We had no findings or issues to report with either your internal controls or financial reporting, or your compliance with government auditing standards. We also had no findings to report with your compliance with Minnesota laws and regulations from 2019. As far as the single audit of the federal awards, we gave a clean or unmodified opinion on your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. Findings there fairly stated in relation to your basic financial statements. Again, here, both in an internal control audit compliance standpoint, we had no findings to report, so file as clean a report card as you can get. One of the things we also do is if you have any findings or issues from the prior year, part of our process for this year is to follow up on those and see if they were rectified. In 2018, one of the kind of key controls over the district's finances is making sure that your monthly cash reconciliation process is done timely and accurately. And middle of the year, in fiscal 2018, the district had a changeover in your financial software, which made that process essentially impossible to do for about the last half of the year. So, we did issue a kind of a finding there, that that important control procedure was not being done timely. Happy to report this year when we came out for 2019, the district gets back to being able to do that monthly reconciliation process in a timely manner. That was everything from kind of a compliance standpoint. Questions on any of that before I move along to some of the numbers? And I will briefly just touch on a few of the financial numbers from the 2019 fiscal year. This graph shows the district's general fund financial position in terms of your year-end unrestricted fund balances and cash for the last five years. At the end of 2019, you had about $14 million in cash of the general fund, and you had a total fund balance of about $11.3 million. Your fund balance in the general fund was about $2 million higher than the prior year end. You had budgeted for an increase of about $370,000, so you did end up about $1.6, $1.7 million higher than projected in your final budget. This next slide shows a breakdown of the fund balance for the last three years into the various components that you reported in. Of that $11.3 million, you got just under $1 million in the non-spendable category. For your district, that's primarily repaid expenditures mainly related to some of your leases, where that lease payment for the law was getting made before year end. Your restricted fund balances were just under $2.5 million at the end of the year. That was up about $865,000 from the year before. Most of those restrictions are state requirements, and in your case, almost all of that is related to various capital restrictions. Operating capital, long-term facility maintenance funds that have to be spent for specific purposes. The last two categories essentially are areas where the district either earmarks things, that assigned fund balances, things that you've eternally identified for specific purposes, and then the unassigned fund balance is available for any purpose. Your assigned fund balances were about $3.3 million at the end of the year. That was up about $300,000, sorry, yes, $300,000 from the year before. Most of that is money you've earmarked for retirement benefits. And finally, that unassigned fund balance, about $4.5 million, represented an increase of about $1.2 million from the year before. One of the factors that we track as far as looking at the financial position of your general fund is what that fund balance represents as a percentage of your annual expenditures. Putting those last two categories together, the things that the district controls, the spending for that represented about 12% of your annual general fund expenditures, which was about $64.5 million in 2019. And the unassigned fund balance, which is what you base your fund balance policy on, you have fund balance policy that you have a target to maintain an unassigned fund balance of between 4% and 8% of your annual expenditures. For 2019, you ended the year at 7%, so you're right, right in that policy you bring. In the general fund, one of the trends we track is your general education funding. This is the largest piece of state aid that you get. It's not the only funding you get, obviously, but it's the largest piece. The basic formula allowance is kind of the largest funding that you get that doesn't have a particular spending mandate attached to it. Districts have been getting about a 2% increase in your per pupil funding for general education for the last five or six years, and you've seen that again in 2020, the year you're operating in now. The other factor that drives that particular formula and some of your other aids is the number of students that you served in terms of average daily membership, and then converting that to pupil units by applying weighting factors. So we kind of track that trend also. For 2019, you did see a decrease in the number of students the district served. You served an average daily membership of about 4,200 students, or roughly 4,580 pupil units for aid. That represented a decrease of about 3% from the prior year, roughly 150 students down. You have been relatively flat for the last four or five years. You've seen some ups and downs from year to year. It has some program changes and things of that nature, but the past four or five years, that variance from year to year has generally been either plus or minus 1%. So this is a little bit larger decrease than you've experienced in recent years. This graph shows your general fund revenues for the current year and budget compared to the prior year. You can see from the graph, the vast majority of your general fund revenue is from two sources. Your state aids supply about 70% of your general fund revenues, and your property tax revenue supplies about another 25% of your general fund revenues. Your total revenues for 2019 were just over $66 million. You were very close to budget, about $230,000 under budget, roughly 4 tenths of a percent. Revenues increased about $3.3 million from the year before, roughly 3% increase. And as you can see from the graph, almost all of that increase was in property taxes, and that represents the increase in your voter-approved operating referendum tax On the expenditure side, you spent about $64.5 million in the general fund, as I mentioned before. That was an increase of about $2.5 million from the year before. Almost all of that was in people costs, salaries and benefits, went up by about $3.2 million from the year before. To budget, your spending was about $2 million under budget, variance of roughly 3%. The majority of that was in purchased services and supplies, about $1.6 million. Most of that relates to carryovers, either district-wide or specific building carryovers that are in some of those fund balance categories I mentioned before. Also, timing of some of your long-term facility maintenance spending in the fund, that's why you saw increases in some of those restricted fund balances for capital needs also, so it's mostly timing of capital expenditures. Also, your salaries and benefits were about $450,000 under budget for the year. Briefly, I'll touch on some of your other funds. Your food service fund ended the year with a fund balance of about $530,000. That represents about 20% of your annual expenditures, which in this fund were roughly $2.7 million for 2019. Your fund balance went up by about $100,000. In 2019, you had budgeted pretty much to break even, I think you budgeted a loss of $2,400. Revenues were about $48,000 over budget, mainly more full-price meal sales was the big variance there, and your expenditures were held about $56,000 under budget. Your community service fund ended the year with fund balance of about $585,000, which represented about 31% of your annual expenditures in that fund, which is just under $2 million. This fund, fund balance went up about $50,000 from the year before, and you'd actually budgeted to spend that down by about $125,000. So roughly $175,000 better than projected. And the big variance there was revenues. You took in about $190,000 more in program fees and tuition than projected. With both of these funds, as with the general fund, the district has done a good job of building solid fund balance back up. In recent years, we always mention to our districts, it's important that these be self-funding so as you're not drawing from the general fund budget to cover the losses in these funds. Another thing we are seeing a lot in our metro districts these days is the student lunch account deficits are getting larger and becoming an issue for districts, and we do caution our districts that you cannot finance those with the fund balance in that food service fund. Because most of that funding comes from federal and state revenues that are paid to you on a per meal, a per meal basis, you're not able to finance lunches that are supposed to be paid, lunches with those dollars. Two other funds I will mention briefly, I don't have a graph for. In your capital project fund, the district issued about $116 million in building bonds in 2018. Those projects are underway in fiscal 19. You spent roughly $14 million in capital project costs out of this fund. At the end of the year, you still have about $107 million in fund balance in that fund. Most of that is either restricted for your future building needs or long-term facilities maintenance. And you also have a debt service fund, which is where the tax levies are collected to pay down those bonds that you issued. You paid down about $8.5 million in principal and interest in 2019, and you have a little over $1 million in fund balance in that debt service fund at the end of 2019. And this last presentation is actually the first one, if you're looking through your financial statements, this is a very, very minimal presentation of your table of net position. What this is, is all of that fund information put into a single presentation and converted to full accrual. So your funds are only reporting current assets and current liabilities. This presentation brings in all of the long-term capital assets, long-term debts, long-term pension and OPEP obligations that aren't reported in those funds, to give you kind of a longer-term financial picture of the district and how it changed from year to year. So the top portion of this presentation can walk you, how, walk you through how you get from the $120 million that you have in fund balances in all of the funds we just talked about, down to your entity-wide net position, which is a deficit of about $40 million. Kind of the big thing that causes that deficit, capital lines up from the bottom, the pension liabilities and other deferments. That's primarily related to the statewide PERA and TRA pension plans. Each year, all of the participants of that plan are allocated a portion of those, those plans under funding, you have to report that in these entity-wide statements. Actually, you did see a big improvement in both PERA, especially TRA, from the last year. As you can see, that liability went down by about $14 million. So you're seeing that improvement come down in that unrestricted net position line there. That $17.5 million improvement you're seeing down there is primarily coming from changes in those statewide pending, statewide pension funding levels, also somewhat the improvement in your general fund. The other components of net position that you reported, your net investment of capital assets, is primarily that changes from year to year based on the amount of capital assets that you have, how fast you're depreciating those versus how fast you're paying back the bonds that you issued to build those assets. We are seeing though, with some of the new funding from the state for long-term facilities maintenance, capital project levies where districts are able to build new capital assets without having issued debt. We're seeing a little more growth from that line, usually that's pretty flat, but you're seeing a couple million dollar increase in that, that investment in capital assets. That restricted net position, in addition to those fund balance restrictions in your general fund, any fund balances in the other funds are restricted by the nature of being in those specific funds. The increase of $4 million that you're seeing there is primarily due to your building construction fund. You made about $3 million in investment income in your building construction fund on those bond proceeds during the year, so you're seeing some, some growth there and that'll be spent down as you finish your projects. So from a number standpoint, that was everything I intended to go over. Questions? Or anything you wanted me to get into further?
Can you just repeat, make sure that I understood correctly, the status of the $500-plus thousand that, in the unrestricted food service? I'm sorry, the restricted total fund balance for the food service. So I think you had said that there essentially are statutory constraints on how those dollars can be expanded?
Yes, there are. The state statutes and the UFR's accounting system that all school districts have to use have very specific things that you can spend that fund balance for. And because a lot of the financing that comes into that fund is either federal or state in its origin, there is a particular, there's particularly a lot of restrictions on what you can do with that. One of the things that's been coming up, as I mentioned, a lot of our districts seeing those individual student lunch accounts going into deficits, becoming a budget issue for districts, because you're either having to finance that out of your general fund budget or through some external contribution. But you are not allowed specifically to finance deficits in that account with that fund balance.
Thank you.
I know one of the, the questions that I've been asking in the last week specifically around this, given the conversations we are having as a community, is, you know, what, what would it cost for us to actually provide lunch for every student in our district? And so, I think to, to help put a, a number on that, that is then, what we are responsible for talking more about is, you know, it would be approaching a million dollars. And so when you think about the entirety of our budget and the decisions that we need to make about how we allocate, as you said, those general fund dollars, that's the magnitude of what it adds up to if we start talking about doing it for every student every day over the course of a year. So just kind of wanted to add that perspective, and that's obviously work in conversation that the board is gonna continue to have here. So, thank you for that level of detail about the restrictions that exist.
I don't have questions, it's just more internal comments. I just want to point out that, if I, if I recall correctly, the unassigned fund balance grew this year, larger than typical in part because we were cautious with the increase in, in, in the taxpayer levy, correct? Like, we, we increased the general fund levy through, through referendum, and we did not go out and spend literally all of it at once, looking ahead, knowing that we would have downward pressure on, on enrollment or catch-up.
That's correct. The board was very clear that we should be making class size reductions and referendum funds sustainable. And so while they are not tied to inflation, some of our goal was to put additional funds away. away so that we were making sure that we would be able to sustain some of the efforts of our referendum over multiple years rather than losing that dollar by empowering the cost of inflation over each and next several years.
I also like to note that, while I appreciate the voters' generosity, that levy per student, the general fund levy per student that we have is roughly, I think, $7.5 or $8 million out of 66, and you can still see 46 million of our budget is state. And so as generous as it is that the voters support us, it can only go so far when we're in the face of 2% a year increase in funds from the state and roughly 2.5% to 3% increase in inflation on everything else that we have. And so that's one of the challenges. I always like to point out the pension, the improvement in the pension liability is not as solid as I would like, in part because last year, I think, they swung artificially low, or actually more accurately low, on the discount rate. They swung to, I think, 5.12% last year, and this year, they went back up to 7.5%. But if you look at the assets that support it, it averages about 4.6% in return. And so we're taking a long-term average of investment return on all the assets supporting the pension, which we have no control over. So this is assigned to us by the folks who control it. That is the most wildly fluctuating number in the entire thing, and it's what drives us to a net position of negative $40 million.
Always helpful to be good. So we will come back to this item later in the meeting agenda to formally accept this audit that has been presented to us, and board members have hard copies available here in front of us as well. Any final questions or comments from the board? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So with that, I am going to bring up Dr. Roby and Director of Technology Cory Clint for this year's World's Best Workforce Report, which is a set of data, some positive, some not as positive, but very, very specific about what is asked for by the state of Minnesota. And so while this doesn't include all of our data, that is in multiple presentations over the course of the year and also in our vision cards, which come along during the course of the year. This is just a set of specific prescribed data aligned to some of the posts within the World's Best Workforce Report. So with that, Dr. Roby.
Good evening.
I'll begin by just briefing and reminding on World's Best Workforce for the public portion.
Can you introduce yourself and talk?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Cory Clint, the Director of Technology. Hello, everybody.
And I am Lidrian Roby. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for the District.
Thank you.
In 2013, the World's Best Workforce was passed and revised in 2016. It is state statutes. It requires that districts report on their progress on five main indicators, that all students or children are ready for school, all students in third grade are achieving a grade level in terms of reading, and that they can, that that achievement is, reading at grade level, that they will, or the districts will close the achievement gap among all groups, and that all students are ready for career in college, and finally, that all students graduate.
And so Cory and I are going to be tag teaming tonight's presentation, and then we'll also be sharing this presentation with our district curriculum advisory, which we do annually as well. If you look at our data, our first metric is around kindergarten readiness, and as you can see, between fall 2018 and spring 2019, for both literacy and math, we've made significant gains with our early childhood pre-K students. Our goal each year is to increase by 10 percentage points or more, and we have far exceeded that in both literacy and mathematics. We began the fall, our pre-Kers began the fall being ready, 48.1% were ready in literacy, and that grew to 96.7% by spring. And then for mathematics, the assessments using a metric of a goal of 28% where we came in, and with an increase, an expected increase of at least 10 percentage points, which would put us at 38%, and we, our students were achieving at 88.8%. This demonstrates that our youngest learners are ready for kindergarten once they do matriculate into our kindergarten, our K-12 system, and that they're very capable of reading and writing and beginning computation in mathematics.
The second area that we'll look at is third graders reading at grade level. Again, as Superintendent Janowski mentioned, there is mixed information. You see here that our original goal was an increase of 10%. So one thing that's hard to see in that graphical representation is that each one is a 10% line, and you can see that in 2016, or since 2016, when we were implementing, 2016 and 17, implementing a new reading curriculum, there was a dip or a little bit of a drop. And now, as that reading curriculum has become more standard work, has become more strongly adopted, and we have implemented a multi-tiered support system, or MTSS, to support our teachers in our classrooms and literacy instruction, the numbers have begun to tick up again. We look forward to see where that trend line goes from here.
The next metric that we're going to look at is closing our achievement gap between our students of color and our white students. And our first group is our Latino students in the areas of both literacy and mathematics on the state assessment, the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment. And as you can see, this is a little mixed result, a little bit harder to, we're working through this. And so the areas that we try to measure is, first of all, access, participation, representation, and outcomes. And between 2018 and 2019, you see that between our Latino students and our white students from one year to the next, we have, in the area of literacy, there was a small closure of about 1 percentage point in literacy, and then also in mathematics, a smaller percentage of like 0.8% on the math assessments for our white students. And if you'll advance to our African-American, Dr. Janowski. Here, our gap has not closed, or we are continuing to grow our gap between our African-American students in the area of literacy in comparison to our white, their white counterparts. And then also, in the areas of mathematics, there was a growth in both areas. So about 4% growth from the 2018 to 2019 measure. And then in literacy, and then also in mathematics, about a 2, almost 1.8, 1.2%. So we are not making progress with those two subgroups in mathematics.
So the next one is a, also in terms of graphical representations, just a couple clarifiers here. One way to make sure that you're looking at the data properly is recognize that within each subject area is a year. So 16, 17, 18, 19 are represented in each subject area, and you can see that by the bar graph, and then as the yellow line indicates how the goal averages across those. One thing to note is that the goal for this past year was the percent of grade 11 students at RPS to meet college readiness benchmarks on the spring ACT test will increase by 4% from 2016 to 2020. Excuse me, that was a four-year goal. So one thing I want to just note here is the trend upwards. So if you look from, for example, a couple there, English from in 2016 to English in 2018, had an increase of three. There was an up and then a bit of a down, but you can see that there's a trend line up. And there's a trend line up in all four of these subject areas. So you see math 20 to 22, reading 26 to 34. That 34 is very exciting. Several things going on there. One is the increase of rigor in the curriculum, a guaranteed and viable curriculum there within that subject area and the adoption of some of the, or some of the curricular adoptions in literacy that we have been undergoing. Science, who's about to come up again for new standards, adoption and new standard cycles, but you see a trend up there. And then all four are trend upward as well for meeting all four. And then our graduation rate continues to grow at a faster rate than the state. You can see there that trend line moving up rapidly. Our World's Best Workforce goal was to increase our four-year graduation rate to 93.5% by 2020. While that's a lofty goal, you can see that we are shining upward and excited about that as well.
Some final thoughts around the work that we are doing and some of the results that we're having. As a district overall, we've had quite a bit of work around innocent classroom and other initiatives that speak around equity and having those realistic conversations with our staff, with our admin team, looking at our systems around when we are seeing equitable practices, and then also when we're not seeing equitable practices and making some changes to positively impact our students. As you had an opportunity to see some of our primary students earlier today with engagement, we really do believe in the action of student engagement and making sure that learning is meaningful for students and that they can be engaged and feel a part of the curriculum. And you see that throughout our district in different avenues, with students doing the picture and writing, also student conferences, student presentations. We had an opportunity earlier this fall to watch our social studies students at the high school present around issues and topics that they felt were of concern to them, and those all kind of speak to student engagement opportunities, professional development, professional development that is aligned, having our district staff having opportunities throughout the school year, not just in our district staff development days, but to work very closely together across teams to look at grade level standards, to look at their scope and sequence, to have discussion around assessments and what's working for the students in real time, and then also making those adjustments as appropriate. And all of those are leading to, hopefully, more positive outcomes and actions for our students.
So with that, you know, and to summarize, obviously, there are areas that we are deeply wanting greater gains. We're obviously seeing significant growth through our pre-K program, and that students getting into third grade for those tests will be coming up very soon. We're seeing positive results in our ACT, and our ACT overall has actually made an aggregate gauge of the last three years, and then our graduation rate and closing gaps in those areas. And then our MCA scores, where we have had interim results and not the types of results that we'd like to have, and as similar with our inconsistent outcomes, there are areas where we've had gap closure and gains, and there are areas where we have had seen achievement go backwards and gaps. So things we'll continue to focus on and regarding the future.
And one other thing, I apologize, that I should have looked at my notes. With response to the action in our processes, that does include our committee work that we've been doing through district curriculum advisory, through social emotional learning committees, through our student groups, having them be very engaged in around processes that directly impact students. And so that's the last component that I probably should have highlighted as well. Questions?
I was just kind of confused with the achievement gap stuff. So is the goal to close it?
Yes.
When?
Yes. So if you look at the goal, so the orange represents our white students, and the green represents our Latino students, and then same on the other, the right side of the slide, it's blue and orange for our Latino and white students. And what we try to do is look at our groups, our students of color groups versus our white students, and see how those students are achieving, and then comparing between year to year. So just using this slide that we're currently on, 69% of our students in the 2018, 69% of our white students in the 2018 MCA reading scored 69% proficiency, and 30, I can see if that occurs. 26.4 of our Latino students were proficient on the reading assessment. And then the next year, there was a, the reason the gap closed just a little is that our white students didn't, both groups advanced, but our Latino students advanced a little bit more. We had 27.9% and 70.2. Does that make sense? Okay. And then the same thing for our African-American students.
And per that question, the L-Rank goal of World's Best Workforce and the statute itself is absolute closure of the achievement gap. And it was written as a means by which to prepare a new generation of employees or upcoming employees for the workforce with an aging population. So the intent behind that is making sure that all of our students are graduating proficient, such as all three of you, and ready to roll in the workforce.
And the last thing that I will add with that is that we want to make sure that all of our students are continuing to achieve and grow, but we have to look at where our students are currently. And so to really effectively close the achievement gap, we need to accelerate the growth for our students of color while we're still working towards improving the growth of our white students as well. We want everybody to achieve, but we have to make sure that we have structures and systems in place to account for the other supports and things that people may need to help that achievement. Other questions? And thank you for that.
I could just feel like to go down as a kid and go like that, where's that, like to the place, but like, and to tell more, like, what do you guys do, like, from different tactics to close the gap?
That's a great question.
That is a great question. So the question was, what do we do with specific strategies to close the achievement gap? A couple of different things. And so first of all, looking at students' data as individuals and then also as a whole to see, okay, if all of our African-American students or all of our Latino students, you know, as a whole, are struggling with this particular concept, how do we pull them out and to either offer enrichment through after-school tutoring, or small group instruction, or in the high school, I know that you have, and I'm going to call it the skinnies, where you have...
Seminars.
Thank you. The seminars, thank you, which is specifically for looking at your student data by what students need to make sure that they have exposure to those more advanced courses, but then providing support in between. And so if you really want to address and enclose the achievement gap, which I know that the district is trying to do, is it's about exposure and access, but then in between. So you can't just place someone in a class that's a more challenging, rigorous class, but not provide some scaffolding support within that. Also, working with our teachers so that they know how to look at data and ask questions of what is taking place in their classroom, being very diagnostic about, you know, if you give an assessment and X number of students did well and X number of students did not, what is the reteaching strategies? What is the plan for the next day? Or using that same example, if you give an assessment and no one does well, then that gives that teacher some data around maybe he or she needs to prepare differently or to give another bite of the apple to make sure that students experience it versus just saying, okay, well, you know what? I taught it, they didn't get it, I'm moving on. And so how do we provide those supports? So it's complicated in that way. And then also, having conversations, and this is, you can do this with upper elementary as well as middle and high school students, that is a more effective strategy, having conversations with students, looking, sharing their data with them on those standardized assessments and showing them specifically, like when you look at the map as an example, and this may be more detailed, if I'm going into more detail, please stop me, but looking at your map. Okay, you got me? All right.
All right. So even though, Dr. Roby did an exceptional job of talking about some of the academic components, we also talked at our board about many of the things that are not necessarily academic. So in the last five years, we've obviously added voluntary pre-K programming to add early interventions, and we've also taken over our own community education. We provide a set of supports to our students that didn't used to be there, like a park booklet health clinic that serves kids birth to 21, a food shelf, a clothing shelf, and things to meet our students' needs, including mental health within our buildings. We've added social workers, we have outreach workers, we've added PLL supports, we've asked our taxpayers for additional funding, we have written an assist grant for additional teachers in reading and math. We have the highest diversity of the administrative leadership team in the state of Minnesota. We have tripled our teachers of color. We have basically been doing all of the strategies that we are trying to implement. And again, in areas, you will see, we are highly successful, and then there are many areas where we have a very long way to go. And so while we are making big progress, there's also, again, there are areas where we are not. So we're just keep adding, and the more you are hearing of our board conversations, the more you'll keep seeing all the things that we're trying to do to ensure all of our kids can achieve and learn grown and self-fulfill.
And keep pushing and asking the questions and also telling us what you need.
I, the same thing I say every time I see this, this is one...
The same thing I say every time I see this, this is one test that I, as a teacher, in different grade levels, it is stressful for students, especially the younger ones. The tests have about, the reading one in particular has a lot of passages that they have to read for reading comprehension. There's about 50 questions if I'm not mistaken. And even if you split it into two, it's a lot of time in front of a computer and I think it's a really hard measure. So my, and I think I said this, I would like to see the days when we have these conversations that we would also have some like more of that pre-assessment data that you're discussing, like the day-to-day. And I don't know if it's because I'm a teacher that I feel that way, but it's to me, it's more like, how are they growing? How are they doing? Because the achievement gap is already there when our kids come, many of our students come to school. Based on, and I'm happy to, you know, we have more access to early education now than we had a couple of years ago. So I think this is definitely going to be helpful. But really trying to make conclusions based on one, you know, standardized testing is really not, really a good way of having a good picture of what, how our kids are doing.
And I would agree that with this data, it is a snapshot based on five metrics that the state has identified that are kind of checkpoints or pulse checks of where we are in our organization at these particular moments. And so for the purposes of our World's Best Workforce, we certainly want to make sure that we present that. But we also do look at student growth at, you know, pre-assessments, post-assessments, and information on the map, using that as a continuum to see where students are and where they, what supports they need in place. And so to your point, yes, I think there should be more data points to really get a comprehensive look at what our students need. And this is more for kind of reporting of those five metrics.
And I think a more concrete example is energy reporting behind professional development for staff and what to do with the NWA map data once they get that and how to use that to inform an instruction between those assessments in order to move students forward. So it's just an example of, yes, it is a metric, but it's not just a metric. It's also then like, or like you said, it's a metric, but it's also what we do with that data in between to help target and assist.
Other questions? Yes.
I just wanna, I always go back to this in something, but that like the teacher and student interaction, the counselor and student interaction, it's the most important because that's what kind of like, I wanna like, like my teachers and I want them to like me and I want them to like, I wanna be able to interact with my teachers. And that's something that in education is super important. So I, it's kind of more of a comment than a question, but I really appreciate all of the hard work you guys have been doing because I can see it. I can see that there's, you know, you guys really try to interact with us. Like having us on the board is, you guys interacting with us and getting our opinions on it. So thank you so much.
And thank you. And I agree that, that teaching is both an art and a science. And the science is kind of the data and things of that nature. But that human to human interaction is extremely meaningful. And sometimes it's harder to capture when students do well because you don't always realize the art of, okay, students are engaged and that they feel like they're really supported and they really are connected. And from a personal level, people go where they feel most welcome. And so when you feel welcome and connected to places you want to do well and when your teacher, the power of someone saying to you, Lucy, you did a phenomenal job. Your presentation was this and this and this means so much more than just saying, good job.
I also just wanted to add that, like, I agree with everything that's been said, but I feel like the achievement gap has just been used as a stamp of approval for many years. So like, for example, like the ACT, the ACT test, right? So like you do, you get a bad score, let's say like a 15, that already is like, oh, you can't get into this many schools, colleges. That already is like really, it pushes kids back and like it doesn't, it doesn't make any improvement for anything. And like honestly, as an example, last year, my junior year of high school, I took my ACT test and then like, I don't remember how long after we took the NWA or MCA or something like that. And kids realized that like it wasn't as important as the ACT, so they didn't take it serious like at all. Nobody in my grade was like, and it was like 50 questions versus like 50 were every section in the ACT, like that difference already. Kids were like, I'm just gonna click through it. So I feel like the achievement gap is kind of like, it tears people down and it brings people up and it shouldn't be used as like a mechanism just to like check for improvement because I feel like it just does the opposite in theory. And like the kids that were here today with the little pictures and stuff, like the way they were reading, they read better than the people that I know my age, like, and that's a really good thing. Like they're fourth grade, second grade, and they can already comprehend and read. And even the words that they were using, the little boy who's using words like structure, like I didn't know what structure meant when I was in fourth grade. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. And to the point around the ACT being a barrier, and it can be a barrier. And again, when you look at quantitative, because that's a kind of a report of numbers and a score, but there's also the qualitative part around achievement where you can't speak to someone's grit and perseverance. And, and there are plenty of people who have gone to college and maybe not with the best ACT or even the best high school grades. You can't necessarily quantify somebody's willingness to kind of dig deep, to be resourceful and go to the, the reading lab or the writing lab or to have a mentor or somebody to work with them. And so that's also another opportunity as we're kind of just dialoguing, as, you know, as we're working with our teachers to make sure that we're helping them understand that, you know, as scores and things are explained to our young people, that also we're providing other information. Because the scores, that's a reporting mechanism that colleges and others look for, but it does not speak always to the potential that someone has and their ability to achieve once they get to school. And that's something that you can't, you can't predict. Other questions?
I had a question. Are the reading and math scores presented here, are they a composite of multiple grades or?
Yes.
They are? Okay. So the, the impact, we mentioned reading curriculum, but we'd also mentioned the, the pre-K rolling through. So we're, we, if we, if everything went to schedule, the, the biggest arrival of gains would be when the kids who started with us in pre-K a couple of years ago are in third grade?
That is correct.
Okay. I mean, it sort of underscores the, the long-term, I mean, if this were easy, everyone would do it, right? And so there, there are aspects to where, it is a long play and we'd like to see the ship turning around. On the ACT, I, I am curious to see if there's, like, if we had benchmarking at state average, if, if you had that available, that would be, that would be helpful to put it in context for us. Although I, Corey, I think I said you, you're optimistic about the positive trends. I, I, it is an extremely optimistic view to see the positive trend. The reading score is, is great, but the others, you know, the 2019 is behind the prior two years. And so I don't share the same optimism, but it is better than 2016. And so I would love to see that turn around, but it's not up to me to just do that. To Dayani's point, the, the high school students recognizing that after having taken the ACT, the state standardized test was meaningless to them as individuals, is something we have been aware of. Not, not that we've seen it in the results, but we've heard the feedback on it. And that's one of the, you know, we have pushed as a board, one of our legislative platforms, to have the Department of Education accept, say, something like an ACT or something meaningful to the students who have to take it. Because, you know, for, even if you're not going to college or secondary or post-secondary yet, there are great many for whom it is valuable. And if nothing else, it's more valuable to them long-term than whatever the MCA for 11th grade puts up, so.
So I think Mr. Prin was also probably combining his understanding of the overall ACT reports, which I do not recall if we have presented here or not. Each of the last three years, that score has gone up from I believe 16.3 to 16.6 to 16.9, which is an accelerated pace faster than the state average. I'm not 100% sure, but I believe the state is about 18.3. So while we're behind the state, we're actually closing in and moving up towards the state and accelerating at a faster pace in terms of our ACT outcomes, each of the last three years.
Thank you. One last question, and hopefully this will be a real quick one. How many years have we been collecting this same set of data?
I think at least through 2012, 2013.
So it goes back quite a ways, yeah. Would you, would you be able to share that longitudinally with us as sort of just individually? That would be awesome. And then obviously we're sort of eyeballing, we talked a lot about Richfield's specific performance just sort of as far as achievement gap, just eyeballing. It looks like the state is equally struggling, you know, to Tim's point, that if this was easier, then everyone would be doing it. And I think maybe when we talk legislatively, we can talk about, one of the things that I feel like I'm hearing from Dayani is that students are feeling like somehow the adults are saying, it's your fault that we're not getting anywhere, when really it's probably the adults' fault. And so I think that as, as we advocate with our legislature, one of my, one of my big pieces with our legislators is looking to the legislature to take some accountability for the performance of the state. And, you know, frustration that I don't know that we actually have a mechanism in place for any accountability there. So nevertheless, that's something we talk about with our legislators.
Last comment for me is I just appreciate how this information is laid out and presented because it is clear. It is stark, as we have been talking about, and I actually think that that is important, to be able to see exactly where we are for the growth that has been made and is being made and for the places where actually we are sometimes experiencing setbacks and see just how far we have to go. And so I appreciate you both for presenting it in this way and appreciate our student board members for making our conversation stronger and better. Thank you. So that was the end of the superintendent update section of the agenda. So we now move into approval of the consent agenda containing 15 business items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Sumo. Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Paulson, a second by Mr. Ashmead. This is Mr. Ashmead, who I mentioned earlier, was going to be joining us in the midst of the meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved, so we move into old business. The first several of which items are related to our facilities work across the district, which Crykold G will present.
Great, thank you. We have a series of change orders relating to our construction projects, as you mentioned. The first relates to Richfield Dual Language School, a change order for $147,843.73. This really ties in with some hazardous materials, some asbestos being identified in the roofing materials as well as the low grade in the waterproofing areas of the foundation that were not known prior to construction, that were identified during testing. And so this project is for that $147,843.73. Total cost of the project is now $9,130,679. And just to note, this is the Richfield Dual Language School project, even though it's a Richfield STEM school, because the LS Black is in charge of all the site work associated with both facilities.
Whether this is the right time or not, you tell me if this is the right time for you, for me to ask this question. So with all of the change orders, you're, you're reporting to us the expense status of the project. Are we able to, are we able to report where that stands relative to what was budgeted for any of these projects? Or is that not a proper question right now?
The, so we showed the original project cost of $8,909, so that was the original that came through with all the change orders. It's now that $9,130. This project was one that came in over budget in the initial bid process. And so there were some value engineering's and if you remember some of the change orders, they were actually negative change orders as far as reductions, now we're adding back into some of those areas. So we can certainly summarize that total. We currently have one bid that's received on the next three and then we have two more that are out for bid. And so probably at that point, once we've received all three of those bids, might be a good time for us to come back and show where each one of those projects are in relation to the total project.
Got it.
We can do a snapshot of, you know, all of our major buildings, once we have these three bids and see how close we're coming in with that process.
I agree that that would be helpful.
Right. And then, and then just also thinking, you know, super big picture in terms of our ability to, because obviously we're, you know, facing this work and there are some buildings that we haven't quite started on yet. So with the expectation as we're covering the unexpected, which I think is probably par for the course with a project like this, so that we can also understand and make sure that the whole, you know, that we're able to get everything done and not shortchange the last building, so like that.
And I can say, one of the things as we've been going through these change orders, looking at the fact that we have not overspent on our contingency as a proportion to the projects that we've completed. So where we're at with Richfield Dual Language School, Richfield STEM and Richfield High School, those three bids are currently in place. As we've looked at these change orders and where there's modifications, we are only taking a proportion of that total project that are, the amount of budget for these three buildings, the contingency, that percentage is the same as our total contingency. We've not gotten deeper into that contingency than where our current project values are. I'm not saying that very articulate.
I think...
We're trying, we're trying to save money, so it's proportional to what we have left to complete.
Yeah, and I think what you're mainly telling me is don't worry too much.
Well, or to just say, yeah.
You know I don't worry.
Well, yeah, it's up to you to worry and I can let you...
We're approximately 60% of the way done and we have gone through a little bit less than 60% of our contingency budgets. So we're on budget within that contingency component, which is there for, for issues like that.
Got it. Thank you. Totally answers my question.
Okay. A helpful aside, given the number of change orders that are in front of us in the next couple of moments. So before this is RDLS change order number 10. Are there any further questions about this particular one?
Master, I will move the change order as presented.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tenzing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the change order is approved, so we move on to our STEM change orders eight, nine, and 10.
Yeah. So eight, nine, and 10. Change order eight is for a total of $23,225. It's for a variety of classroom materials, including installing some lockers that were originally going to be removed, marker boards, wall lockers in the classrooms, and adding flooring to special education calm rooms and science storage room. Once we started with the project, we identified there was some addition on these as part of that. Change order number nine is $24,202 for just a variety of modifications that came up through questions. And then change order 10 is for some ceiling modifications to resolve unforeseen construction coordination with existing structures. Sometimes you open up ceilings, you open up floors, you open up walls and you find things that you didn't anticipate to be there. And so that is the $11,109. Original project cost was $14,966, $966,145. Total cost of the project is now $15,25,382.
Thank you.
I will move change orders eight, nine, and 10 as presented.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tenzing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the change orders are approved. Next we have RHS change orders five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Thank you. And again, this is a variety of different change orders. Change order five is for $88,631, primarily dealing with installation of insulation around plumbing and steam lines as well as the addition of a data closet or relocation of a data closet into the boardroom area and kind of phasing some of that work. Change order six is primarily mechanical modifications for existing conditions of $24,352. Change order seven is some structural voltage modifications for existing conditions, much of that dealing with concrete supports for new air handling units, $24,389. Change order eight is for repair of existing conditions such as some wall repairs and damaged ductwork of $16,104. And change order number nine is $41,218 for modifications to the La Carte Cafe Express Equipment Personal Services Grant funded area. And original cost of that is, was $35,725,872. And the total cost of the project is now $35,920,540.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I will move that we approve the RHS change orders five, six, seven, and eight.
And nine. One second. So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the change orders are approved. One last one, RHS asbestos abatement change orders two and three.
Yep, and this is change orders two and three for a total net increase of $179,572.50. If you remember, we did some modifications to the scheduling of our asbestos abatement in the mechanical areas. This also includes a significant amount of detail in the backup materials for additional work. Similar to what I said previously, sometimes you open up walls, you open up ceilings, you open up floors, and change some of the scope, and that changes, you find additional asbestos that needs to be abated. Much of this is all identified in within the pricing of the original bid, as far as what the labor and supply rates were, so we've been monitoring it that way, but the project here is for that additional increase of $179,572.88. Total project on that went from $528,871 up to $708,444. And some of those abatements from the previous increase, if you remember also, were, we were anticipating to do next summer, but we brought those up into this current summer. So some of that's offset with future potential expenditures.
Questions, comments, or a motion on change orders two and three for RHS asbestos abatement?
I'll move change orders two and three.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the change orders are approved. So we will now move to the revised policy and administrative guideline 524 on promotion, acceleration, and retention.
Right, so it's 524 and 524.1. As you remember, 524 was reviewed back in 2017, 524.1 actually needed an overhaul completely, and so there was a full rewrite, which you will see in your packet. And as we examined that, we recognized that 524 no longer aligned, and so we needed to renew that policy on clarifying some definitions around promotion, intervention, acceleration, also adding twice exceptional, talking about program design, and then also directing our district to develop guidelines for doing some of that work. And then within the guidelines, reiterating some of those definitions, adding enrichment and intervention, and then talking about the processes by which a student is promoted, retained, or accelerated within subject or across subjects, or even across grade level, talking about differentiation, and then all the other options under those areas. So you have the fully revised, rewritten policy and accompanying guidelines in front of you this evening.
I know I was not here when this was discussed, I believe it was just last week.
It was.
Any final questions or comments, otherwise we could entertain a motion to approve all of these revisions.
I'll move that we accept the revisions as presented.
So we have a motion by Mr. Cole, Mr. Paulus, and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the revised policy and guideline is approved, and thanks to all, all of the hard work that went into that. So moving into new business first up is very exciting. It's the request for authorization on the capital facilities project at Sheridan Hills Elementary School.
Exactly, thank you very much. And please invite John Kretmer up from World Architects to share an overview of the Sheridan Hills project. We're also seeking your authorization to go out for bid this evening. This is the third project coming before you this fall for construction next spring, summer, and fall, and some of these into the following year. And so I'll just turn it over there, so you can see some of the new items coming on this project. One of the things, just to kind of remind you, you'll see all the same things as what we're done in the other buildings, because we are looking for that continuity across the organization, but, so some of it will be similar, but it's, each building's a little bit unique, so with that, let's turn it over to John.
Hello, thank you for having me back again. Before I begin, I'd just like to say thank you for not putting me behind the Centennial students. My goodness, that'd be a hard act to follow, and they could have a bright future, so. Getting into Sheridan Hills, I'm sure that you're familiar with what we're going to be looking at this evening, but went over a project schedule, scope, the development of the plans, going through our core planning group process, taking a quick look at finished standards, and then everybody's favorite, looking at some pictures at the end. Project schedule, we are issuing the documents mid-December with the intent of bidding in mid-January. Construction will commence in very select portions of the building in April. It has been coordinated with ICS and with the school, but the really big, heavy work is going to begin in June, carry on through the course of the summer. There'll be a minimal exterior and lower level work, mechanical work during the course of the school year, and then wrapping up the project in the summer of 2021. Referendum scope is, again, very similar to what you've seen for other buildings, so I'll hit on what's specific at Sheridan Hills. Here we are doing a renovated administrative suite, relocated, or not relocated, but renovated sped suites, renovated media center, open center working spaces, and a kitchen and cafeteria addition. The project development has, again, gone through a very similar process with that continued guidance and input given during the core, or the planning oversight committee. The big kickoff of the design scope is conducted with the core planning group. That consists of holistic, design-driven consensus given by volunteers to go over design criteria and guiding principles. From there, we meet with specific end users to hear about the needs that they need for their specific spaces. Before I get in, before we leave this, I'd just like to say a comment about the core planning group that we had at Sheridan Hills. They were extremely driven. We actually got to user group level detail in our fourth meeting. That's not to say it's a better process than what we've done at other buildings, but they just had a very clear idea of what they wanted their building to be, and it made for a fluid process. Some of the goals that were established with that group were to improve the front entrance, more evident and obvious and welcoming main entrance that had a wow factor, a media center that was visible upon entry to highlight its significance in the school as an educational facility, a community gathering space at the main entrance, to improve wayfinding, to make it more intuitive, and improve community access to specialist spaces. Those were very coupled in the rearrangement of some of the programmatic spaces with the media center, music, art, and the gymnasium. And then lastly, they really were intense on putting students, student work on display. So here's the existing building, main entrance is right below that lovely circle that I'm sure everybody is familiar with. The exist, or the new building, we're doing an addition there, and then at the top part of the screen, you can see that we're doing a kitchen and receiving addition. The rest of the moves are moving, essentially flip-flopping where admin and the media center will be located from where they are currently, and doing some LTFM work in the classrooms and special ed suite. Here was a user group plan of the admin suite. So the blue bar on the bottom is where the ramp currently is. We are extending the ramp further towards the building entrance with the addition of a new secure vestibule. So the sequence of entrance will occur in the same spot, but it will introduce that secure line that the building currently does not have. A side comment, the office right above that circular space is Nancy's office, and during user groups, and even in core planning, she very strongly advocated for her own exterior door, just in case solicitors showed up, so. It was, it's, it can be a really challenging process and stressful at times for staff to think about things that they can't see coming, so to have some fun with them during the course of the process was really gratifying. Here's the special education suite. They are currently in the same location that you're seeing here. The map on the left side of the screen shows where they are, the main level on the south end of the building. They, like other schools, are kind of wedged into a space that was not designed to fulfill their specific needs. They've done a wonderful job making do with what they have, but they were especially grateful for some of the opportunities to have some input on what this space could be like in the future. Here's the media center. So again, as a reminder of what we talked about during core planning, they wanted this at the center of the building, and they also wanted a community gathering space at the center, similar, again, to what we did especially at Dual Language, was to combine the two processes. It's a big, open space that is conducive for large group gathering, that functions both well for the community and for the school. So here's the kitchen and cafeteria. On the right side of the existing kitchen area is a new mechanical chiller, so the big cooling tower will no longer be there, which I'm very grateful for, and I'm sure the school will be as well. The left side is the receiving addition, and though this might not be one of the more glamorous and highly visible spaces, I will say that this will be a very big improvement for numerous staff at this building. I know currently, some of the staff are making do with officing out of dry storage areas, so again, it's a really big change for them, and it's something that we're certainly excited to provide them. So that's some of how the building is going to change in its layout. Here's a glimpse of what we're looking at as far as interior finishes. Again, similar to the other schools, it has evolved over the vintage and the design. The designs have been implemented over the course of the years, and with that has come kind of a hodgepodge of materials, but sticking with our district standards and responding to some of those existing materials has given us actually a very playful color palette that we're happy to provide to the group. This is the front entry, obviously with the snow, it's a recent picture, so this is what it looks like today. And here is the main entrance that we're looking to provide. The first, I'll confess, the first time I went to Sheridan Hills, I ended up on the north end of the building at the receiving door, so this would have been far more evident to me that this is where I'm supposed to enter the building, and I'm really excited with how this is ones looking. So here is at the top of the ramp, if you do a U-turn, you end up in the media center, and it's a nice media center, especially for the 1990s. It's a little bit closed off, and this is where we're locating the, the admin suite. And here is the reception area here. The receptionist that we met with during the admin user group process said that there is always students working in there, so it was very important to them to have some workstations, not only for themselves, but for the students, so they could continue to have that interaction and presence of the students there. And you can see on the left side of the image, the tall rectangles are glass, so they'll have far more of a visual presence and ability to supervise the main entrance. Here at the top of the existing ramp is the entrance to the administrative suite, and I'll say that the blandness of this wall is a stark contrast to the warm greeting that you get when you get inside. I haven't, I haven't ever showed up there unannounced even, without a big smile, so happy to do away with the burnish block here. And this is the media center space that will be kind of the core of the building. One thing that Nancy was lamenting giving up is her current space, which is that window right next to the purple wall. She said, how am I going to see the playground? And I said, well, you'll have to get another camera to see it, so. But it's, it's a really fun space that the school is really excited to have finally, so. That's, that's what we've got. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments about Sheridan Hills?
That's good.
That pretty much sums it up. It's very exciting.
Nothing from the students?
I think we've asked all the questions about the process and how these changes came to be for the other buildings. It wasn't different for this one?
No, no, replicated it, yep.
But it is exciting to see what the families and students at Sheridan Hills, along with our staff, have to look forward to.
Absolutely. And again, same as every other project that we've had, they've been instrumental in helping us get through it, so thank you for that.
So if there are no questions, we could entertain a motion to authorize the administration to keep bids for this work at Sheridan Hills.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid authorization is granted. So next, we will come back to the audit that was presented hour and a half ago now, and the annual process of formally accepting the audit.
Thank you. And we do have that request for that formal authorization. Under our board policy, we require that be by resolution. There's a copy of that resolution included in the board's act as well, so that's authorizing the 2018-19 audits completed by MMKO.
Thank you. Any final questions or comments?
I will move the resolution as presented.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing and a second by Ms. Malik. Any discussion? As this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Cole?
Aye.
Tensing?
Aye.
Ashmead?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the audit is accepted. So we move into advanced planning. The first item in this section of the agenda is a legislative update, and this evening we have potential legislative priorities back for further discussion.
Yes, just putting into, into the board packet, AMSD, our Association of Metropolitan School District, has passed their legislative platform, and it's in here in draft form because they have not publicly voted upon. It was voted upon at a meeting that Dr. Tensing and I attended. And then an update based on the feedback that was given here prior to moving it back onto a business agenda item, just for review. Notice the order change in some of the things that we have, suggested priorities, which we have seven at the moment, create support programs to increase teachers' apparel, and that was emphasized by our students, by our students, our student board members, increase sustainability efforts and create recommendations for schools, reducing standardized tests, something we talked about today, maintain the reduction of the cross subsidy, and keeping that in policy, allowing school boards to renew levies, and reducing mandates and refraining from future unfunded mandates. So this is before the board to look at, think about again, and give feedback prior to our next meeting, if there are things to eliminate, things to add, and then to use this to guide the study session we'll likely have with our legislators, probably in January, since the session starts in February.
There's one piece that, under the sustainability piece, can we add, you know, the word environmental sustainability? It's more than that, it's energy as well. I'm not sure if there's, if there's other words, but again, to sort of have that clarity of what we're talking about.
Would you like to play with it, or would you like to word spit it exactly, and then we will slide it right in?
And the only suggestion I have right now is environmental and energy sustainability efforts, that may be, that may be covered, kind of what we're talking about. Oh, I guess, I guess maybe, right, so we're asking the legislature to create recommendations for schools.
So I think the intention is to refrain from mandates.
Yes.
Put it on the agenda for conversation and be very clear in delineating, not create expectations, but recommendations, and so that they're utilizing state resources and legislative platforms to emphasize that as being important without requiring things to obfuscate everyone's wishes.
The two things that I was going to say is, I don't see the level of specificity here that we have had in past years, and that we talked about earlier, about the ACT/MCA piece, and so whether it would be helpful to insert that level of specificity into the, the draft. And then the second thing is, reducing mandates and refraining from future unfunded mandates, I think is very easy to agree with at a sort of legislative level, but what that actually means, I think, is incredibly difficult to discern, and so it's, it's difficult for me to say, do I really support this, do I not support this, because it could take so many different directions, and I think it would probably be pretty confusing to our legislators as well. So I think there's a level of detail there that I have a question about.
The challenge, reduce mandates typically is the response of, give us the list of what exactly you would reduce. Refrain from future unfunded mandates actually oddly is more clear. Pretty typically, all lobby groups produce a list at the middle and end of every legislative session of all the things that are being proposed, that don't then have funds tied to them, and so.
I think then we should have those lists to go along with that.
No, I think, I think it's very good feedback on the MCA/ACT piece, and we should push hard on that.
Clarity bullet two, clarity bullet three. The other thing for board members to think about is we had also talked about reducing the number of those. We can focus on a few, and so also either now or between this and the next board meeting, we can certainly take feedback on elimination of a couple of bullets, we can really focus our efforts in a couple of areas if that works.
How long is, did, has, was it mentioned when, what, do we have a schedule for when we will meet with our representatives?
Not selected yet. We often work to try to make it according to their schedule, and what would make the most sense is probably, since our new board numbers, our board number is seated in January, you're probably likely to do the second meeting in January, but Ms. Island and I need to check our legislative schedules and make. check our legislative schedules and make sure that they are available on that date.
I agree with the idea. I mean, historically, we've taken this, this, this menu and picked three to five that we felt were most important at a local, at our local level.
Yeah, we'll have about, I mean, considering that, we'll have maybe 30 minutes to, to really have that conversation. It would be good to focus.
And then it also guides admin and wing to go to the legislature. We get requests often to come and speak, and to come and be active in many political platforms where things that might support in our schools, and we have pretty much administratively tried to hold the lines, because these are our top priorities, and we only want to take time away from our real public schools if they're aligned to our top priorities.
So there will be some further revisions, and we'll come back, and then I think we can have the prioritization conversation about narrowing this down. Okay, so next is time for information and/or questions members of the board would like to share with each other, and members of the public in person, and yeah, you too.
I just, I just have a comment, and it's related to the lunch event of last week. We've had a number of things that we've passed as policies or procedures or, or changes in practice that aren't, that are neither policy nor procedure that needs to be approved by us, but we've affirmed it, whether it was like something at the high school. And, and each of those might require, you know, if it's a policy, we've asked in the past, what is, how do we verify the training that's provided to staff? If it is in fact something new, how do we, how do we verify that, you know, like if it's mid-year, we've, we've heard that, you know, we introduce it, staff gets an email, but then the real training is the following year? And some of them are big, and some of them are small, and some of them are really subtle, and the subtlety is actually critically important, as we've spent a lot of time reviewing the language on it. And so the incident of last week was, was a reminder to me that there are things out there that we've passed and felt very strongly about, what we did want and what we didn't want. And last week, we got something that we, I think we emphatically didn't want. And there are other instances of it, you know, on things as recently passed as, like the gender inclusion policy, when, when my daughter tells me that they're separated by gender for, to hear about vaping, which does not sound gender-specific for a pedagogical reason. And so there are a number of other areas, and I don't want to list them all, where that subtlety and that importance of staff training and verifying it. But we are, I don't want to sit here and feel as though I'm spinning wheels and, and coming up with this, this idea that doesn't hit the action level. And so I would like to hear more about the specifics of the training and how we go through training staff and making them aware of the changes, so that the ideas that, that we have come up with, and, and, and administration has come up with, so I know they are also disappointed, I'm not saying it's, it's strictly us, but how do, how do we get those ideas out there and communicate it in a way so that we cannot have an instance where there's, there's a single person who, if, if there is an event where a single person is mistaken on what the proper procedure is or what the proper treatment of an idea is, there are plenty of staff members around them who recognize that is not the procedure. And so that's important to me, to have that level of training and understanding permeated throughout the staff, and it appears as though we at least lacked it last week. So.
And to echo and build on that point, I would really strongly encourage us to look at expanding what I would call sort of the sphere of accountability. I feel that we have an opportunity to, you know, one of the things that, one of the things that we, we talked about with our branding work was the commitments that we're making as an organization to our community. And I think as a board, when, you know, several years ago, when we talked about sort of our expectations around how we would manage school lunch debt, I think we were presuming that we were making a commitment to the community after having what I think was a relatively in-depth conversation about the nuance of that particular scenario. However, I think it's also true that it's unrealistic for us to expect that any, well, many of our community members are either sitting here or watching us on YouTube, and as we make these commitments, we need to have a mechanism by which it is clear to the person that we're making the commitment to, that this is our expectation of ourselves, this is what you can expect of us. So for example, in this particular scenario, I don't know, students, you guys can tell me if you feel like yourself or your peers would have had some idea of what an appropriate expectation would have been in that situation. So I feel like this is an opportunity, you know, for us to kind of gain more clarity around how we articulate as an organization what, you know, what our constituents can expect of us, and I think that helps our staff too, to have clarity around sort of what they should be expecting of themselves. So that's my thought.
Yes, I was very aligned with what you said at the beginning, still that, you know, there's no excuse for what happened, and just basically take responsibility for that that it did happen, whether it was what we wanted or not. So we need to figure out how to go forward and prevent anything like this from happening again, and I think that will take some work.
Just making sure that there's time, if anybody's still thinking, if there's anything else that they want to share about what happened last week in the cafeteria, or other things. This is also the time to share anything else that people want to discuss or bring up with each other on the board level.
I have nothing.
Lucy looks like she's thinking of something.
Well, I was actually, well, I wanted, again, to thank you guys, because you guys have taken action to getting our input on it, and I'm in student government, and Ms. Daniels went to our meeting that we just had, our RNO meeting, and she asked us what we think that could have been done, and obviously letting those students know, those families know ahead of time, and what we can do next time, so I think your actions are definitely helping, and it's gonna get better.
I agree. I was talking to Dr. Nancy before the meeting started, saying that it was a big of, like, which you want to come out instead of like hiding from it and like letting it blow over, and like having Carol Leven reported, posted, like being okay with like people tweeting about it, talking about it, letting you go, yeah. I think it's definitely important to have like feedback and to at least take accountability, like you said, transparency is a big thing, and that's what most schools wouldn't have done, and like what Lucy was saying, like the work that's being put in is very obvious, and I just appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much for those reflections. I mean, I, I will say that as, as challenging as it is for obviously the whole community to be on the national stage in a very unflattering way, I guess that I have felt, and hearing this from you guys is really meaningful, that this is a community that comes together and cares for each other when things get rough, so I really appreciate that from you guys.
So do I. Sitting on TV, I feel like there would be a vacuum if I didn't acknowledge it and get here. Obviously, we do not condone what happened, that was absolutely unacceptable. There were obviously failures from a leadership, from a communications, from a judgment standpoint. We have brought somebody in to examine what happened to try to determine those pieces. It is important to note that this is a practice that has been implemented in a much more effective way without something happening like happened last week for over two years now. And so while we are going through and have been going through larger policy training for all of our staff over the course of this year, we also note the additional for some added support-based training, because there are, again, we are, I am waiting on that report to try to reflect on what are those strategies to really implement to find out how exactly do we make sure nothing like this ever happens again, because I think that is what, what our responsibility is.
I want to, I see a lot of, not a lot, I, there have been instances where staff in different buildings have made decisions that are now kind of like taking initiative in a way without knowing the guidelines and without knowing the, the procedure, but in our search for guidelines and processes and all of that, I think, working towards a better climate in our buildings to understand that these guidelines are actually about people and the most important people who are our students, and that it's not a number, it's not, it's not an amount, it's, it's a child, and it's a family, and, and it's not always about efficiency, and really bringing that humanity back so that all of us can really think about what really matters before we make decisions that we might think that are helpful and then they're actually not. That's all I have.
Let me see if there are any final words, that seems like a beautiful note to end on.
I just want to say, we live in an amazing, we live and work in an amazing community, and we can only grow from this. We've done so many good things, like the construction, everything, we've done so many good things, and it set us back a little bit, but it's an experience to have.
Our next meeting will be at 7:00 PM on Sunday, December 2nd, and include our annual truth and taxation hearing. The final meeting of 2019 will be at 7:00 PM on Monday, December 16th, and begin with our next opportunity for public comment. Finally, are there any items that board members would like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda that we have not already brought up?
I have one question. The agenda mentioned closed session is that, happening or not happening?
I was under the impression it was still happening.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Brief. Excellent. I was just, I was just waiting for you to set it up.
I'm, I'm getting there.
Okay.
There are two things that I would like to put on the radar, and I think that they are, but just knowing when they're coming. One is following up on the student presentations from the high school back in October, and then two is having a first look and first discussion at our strategic planning process for 2020.
So in our leadership team meetings, we have tentative scheduled for actually our next meeting, an intro update on strategic planning, and also vision part B, our first vision part of the year. And then in terms of, of the student presentations, we are working with Mr. Harris, who's been quite busy in the negotiations and contract-based process, but we are, I will follow up with him, remind him to follow us in his course, help with our students and leading network, and I think that, and I just, I just got quite excited, so I'm assuming they'll follow up with Mr. Harris tomorrow, to talk about when they can present and overall synthesis of the, the feedback our students have presented to us.
Great. Before we entertain a motion to move into closed session, thank you to those of you who are still with us here at the end of the evening, and thanks to all the people who were with us at the beginning, and all of the points of time in between, and to people watching this after the fact on video. As allowed by Minnesota Statute 13D.03, the board may hold a closed session for the purposes of labor negotiation strategy. Is there a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Tensing. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and after a brief recess to clear the room, the board will reconvene in closed session. Thank you.